This is quick announcements before we start this evening's meeting. Fire exits, fire exits are located at the rear, front and the right sides of the theater. Backrooms are located immediately to the right as you exit the theater. There are drinking fountains both on the left as you exit the theater and further down the ramp on the right-hand side. Thank you and enjoy your evening.
Hearing? Good. All right, we're in call meeting order. This is a continued public hearing. It is Tuesday, April 17, 2018, 7:00 AM. Sherry, would you please call the board?
Here. Andrew Valabacco. Here. Andrew Schmitz. Here. And Phil Volker. Here. Paul Leary. Christopher Jones. Here. Scott Andrew Harvey. Here. Jany Brackoff. Here. Kato Harris Hall. Attorney General. Here.
IWC 17-012R, 30 Old Coast Road Shoreline Rail and Recycling LLC applicant, Old Coast Road Realty Owner. Regulated activity within 50 feet of inland wetlands. Replace 186,000 square foot building demolished in storm with new 94,500 square foot structure and outside storage of materials on existing concrete pad. Accessors map 77 block 59 lot 1A zone I2. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard and written communication received. Applications and accompanying maps are available for public inspection in the land use office of Town Hall. Dated at Clinton, Connecticut the fourth day of April 2018, David Rackhead share. This is a list of documents received from April 3 through April 16, 2018. All documents are on file in the land use office. Undated, letter from CT Department of Agriculture Bureau. Shellfish beds. GGS section 22A-91. Coastal Boundary Developing Goals and Policies. Coastal Consistency Review, copy of application submitted. Environmental Permitting Fact, DEP Fact Sheet. Diagram of Wet Swale. Letter dated March 30. Letter from Hudson and Kilby LLC. Verified pleading under oath. April 2, 2018. Letter from Snarsky, updated comments. April 3. Letter from Cronin and Shields, time concerns and use of site. April 2. Letter from Parker, in opposition. April 3. Letter from Mitchell, in opposition. April 4. Email from Sturgis, in opposition. April 6. Email from Service, in opposition. April 6. Email from Alder, in opposition. April 6. Email from Sider, in opposition. April 6. Email from Ritter, in opposition. April 6. Email from De Palmero, in opposition. April 6. Letter from Louisville, in opposition. April 6. Letter from Knight, in opposition. April 6. Email from Donati, in opposition. April 6. Email from Wolf, in opposition. April 6. Email from Wilder, in opposition. April 6. Letter from Sider, in opposition. April 6. Email from Ritter, in opposition. April 6. Email from De Palmero, in opposition. April 6. Letter from Louisville, in opposition. April 6. Letter from Knight, in opposition. April 6. Email from Donati, in opposition. April 6. Email from Wolf, in opposition. April 6. Email from Wilder, in opposition. April 6. Letter from Sider, in opposition. April 6. Email from Ritter, in opposition. April 6. Email from De Palmero, in opposition. April 6. Letter from Louisville, in opposition. April 6. Letter from Knight, in opposition. April 6. Email from Donati, in opposition. April 6. Email from Wolf, in opposition. April 6. Email from Wilder, in opposition. April 6. Letter from Sider, in opposition. April 6. Letter from Ritter, in opposition. April 6. Letter from Larrero. Extension of April 7, 2018, continued public hearing. April 7. Email from Schultz, in opposition. April 8. Email from Thompson, in opposition. April 8. Email from Soretto, in opposition. April 9. Email from Morando, in opposition. April 9. Email from Yagi, in opposition. April 9. Email from Hafferin, in opposition. April 10. Email from Lamblyn, in opposition. April 10. Email from Hessford, in opposition. April 11. Response from Larrero, response to April 3, 2018, public hearing comments. April 13. Letter from Marsnick, in opposition. April 13. Letter from S. Marsnick, in opposition. April 13. Email from Broschu, in opposition. April 13. Email from Stewart, in opposition. April 15. Email from Kavanaugh, expert testimony, in opposition. April 15. Email from Webster, in opposition. April 16. Undated letter from Conti, in opposition. Would anyone like to have a document from the document last written to the... Would anyone like to have a document from the document last written to the record?
I just want to, I would like to say something about that list. It's pretty extensive and I want folks to understand that comments that we've received, be they via email, be they written comments, they are part of the record, okay? So the fact that we're not asking Scott to physically read them out loud doesn't change that status, okay? They still have the same weight and standing to bear. So if anyone submitted something and we're not going to read it because in the interest of time, what I'd like to do is move to the public comment portion for you folks who are here. You've all been very patient through two meetings already and I know we had cut short of where we were in the list last time and I'd like to take up where we left off and then move to the additional folks who've signed up this evening, okay? So I just wanted you to know that without ignoring or discounting the comments that have come in, again, they are part of the record, okay? Except having said that, Sherry reminded, this one we do have to read it because it's
From Dale Moore to Sherri Hines. Dear Clinton Land and Land Wetlands Commission Chairman, David Rackhead, members, I am writing to voice my opposition to the proposed industrial SR and R race recycling facility on Route 145 in Clinton that is now before you. As stewards of protecting our wetlands, I respectfully call upon you to reject this application. Ecological consequences of hazardous materials leaching into adjoining wetlands and flowing down the Hammock River are untenable. Hazardous material finding its way into the surrounding wetlands, wildlife, river marshes would affect both private businesses and public recreational resources. While I understand a need for the recycling facilities, in my opinion, the proposed Route 145 industrial site is extremely ill-suited for this kind of industry and poses a threat to the ecological balance that exists today in the adjoining wetland area. I believe the newly proposed Clinton Greenway Blue Way Trail map below demonstrates how intricately linked this proposed 145 industrial waste site facility would be to the Hammock River Marsh Wildlife, Clinton Town Beach and Inner Harbor areas. Thank you for your time and consideration, Dale Timor. 115 Settlers Lane, Clinton, Connecticut.
We also received comments today from our consulting engineer, DTC. Would you read those, Scott?
Dated April 16, 2018. Dear Mr. Knapp, as requested, we have completed our review of revised plans and comment responses provided for the above referenced application. The information reviewed consisted of the following. Based on the review and following the number convention from our January 15, 2018 letter, we offer the following. Comment number one, no further comments. Comment number two, the revised application material does not address our concerns over leachate, collection and disposal. As discussed in our earlier letter, it seems inevitable that a liquid component of the demolition waste should be expected and must be properly collected, handled and disposed of. Provisions for managing this waste should be provided. This management could include collection, treatment and storage of liquid waste by a floor drain system with a collection tank. It could also include dumping of pre-processed waste in a fully contained areas within the building, performing cleanup through material solidification, absorbent clay materials or other means of collection and removal. In any case, the developer must provide assurances that any liquid component to the demolition waste will be collected and disposed of in such a way as to prevent these materials from leaving the processing building in an uncontrolled manner. A copy of the developer's CT DEP solid waste application was not provided as suggested. Comment number three, the developer's decision to provide floodproofing to the proposed building is a welcome addition to the proposed project. Proper floodproofing of the building has the potential to fully isolate the inside building operations from outside flooding events. It is imperative that the building be designed to structurally support flood loads along with the perimeter outside building walls to at least 12 inches above the FEMA base flood elevation. Detailed operational instructions covering the storage, maintenance, inspection, installation and removal of the flood plank system should be provided for review and should be posted in a prominent location for reference by building staff. Instructions should also include directions for operational staff to follow in determining when flood planks should be deployed and when it is safe for them to be removed. Since this is a fully passive system, proper flood protection will require daily monitoring and timely action by building personnel to ensure that flood planks are properly deployed in advance of rising floodwaters. Lack of proper attention would result in floodwaters entering the building and carrying demolition materials outside the building to collect in the adjacent wetland systems. Comment number four, no further comments. As we stated on numerous occasions, the operation of this facility is a critical component of ensuring proper protection to surrounding environmental concerns. Development of detailed best management practices for the operation of this facility as well as a proper staff training and reporting on practices will help to ensure that staff understand their responsibilities and conduct their operations in a manner that will protect against unnecessary environmental impacts. Please review the above comments with the board and contact the undersigned if you have any questions. Sincerely, J. Andrew Valabacco, P.E., DTC Incorporated.
So what we have is a sign up sheet down front where it was last two times and what I've appended to that is a photocopy of the sign up sheet from last week. So we continue where we left on. There was some renumbering that you all did and I'm going to try to follow this. I think the next individual is Joanne. She goes at 15, Founders Village. Is Joanne here?
Yes.
Joanne, oh great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jerrance Whitler. I own the unit with my daughter at 15 Founders Village, the adjacent property to the proposed site. I was brought up here since I was a very little girl in the summer times and the one thing I never remember is having to leave our property or move our vehicles because of the high tides. This has become a common event in the past 10 years. Maybe two to three times a month we now have to do this. This is along the shoreline. This is not at Founders Village, but it's very close to the shoreline. These 25-year storms or 100-year events are much more common than that. It's happening monthly, these high tides, and not just because of the storms. It's happening because of the water level rising. And the fact that the proposed site is just feet away from the waterways is extremely concerning. You have discussed about the fluid that leaks from the trucks that come into the site. Because of the water level so high, this fluid doesn't have far to go to contaminate the waterways. Now, since, it's been over 50 years since I've been up here and a lot of our wildlife has diminished or gone away. And another concern we have is the septic system, which I don't think has really been addressed thoroughly and I don't think there's been any additional testing, but because the leaching fields are so close to the waterways and the water level rising as it is, that's extremely concerning. And being a resident at Founders Village, so close, it's just a contaminant and the aerosols going into the air, so close to Founders Village is extremely concerning. I just want to thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you very much, Ms. Whittler. Was there, was there anything you wanted to submit?
Oh.
Thank you. Next, we have Claire Halloran, if Claire is here. 40, Founders Village, followed by Vince Semino, if Vince is here.
Good evening. Claire Halloran, 40, Founders Village. That was a lot of wind and rain that we had yesterday. It is known that the sea level is rising. I'm in full agreement with the scientific information provided by Steve Trinkus and Ari Hiddle, also with the informed people who spoke in opposition to the industrial waste facility. Enormous thanks today. This is an important spot on earth because what happens here is far-reaching and long-lasting. There is no naloxone for this.
And Vince Semino, followed by Kirk Carr.
Members of the commission, Mr. Chairman, first of all, this has been long and tedious for us, but I know it has been for you as well. And thank you for listening to all our comments. This has been going on for three years, really, and one big lie has been perpetuated over and over again. And at our last meeting, the last public hearing, it was announced again by the attorney for the applicant. He said that this is a continuation of the same use as the previous operation. And a couple of years ago, I wrote a letter to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the Order Selectmen, saying that that is absolutely not true. It is legally not true. It is established that recycling is not the same as warehousing. And the town attorney, I believe, agreed at that time and sent back communication to both orders. It's not a matter of if this place catches fire or floods, it's a matter of when. We've seen in our immediate area and everywhere around the country that these type of facilities catch fire and flood. And you've heard all sorts of expert testimony that their safeguards are wholly inadequate and that this will affect the surrounding wetlands. I believe that's all you need. Yes, the whole community came out. There's a petition that has more than 2,200 signatures on it. I think now it's almost 2,500. You've got the emails, you've got all these people who have shown up, three meetings. You know how we feel, the community, but you also know what the experts have told you. You have more than enough evidence to deny this application and I ask that you do.
50% of you, you're good. Thank you. So we've got Kirk Carr, followed by Dave Borg or Bark, if Dave is here. 85, Founders Village.
Kirk Carr, 900 Common South. First of all, thank you very much for your service and for being so patient with everyone, including the applicant and those of us who are speaking this evening. Connecticut general statute on inland wetlands, section 22A through 41A, lists the factors to consider when reviewing an application, including, among others, environmental impact, maintenance and enhancement on long-term productivity of the wetlands, irreversible and irretrievable loss of resources, the character and degree of interference with the safety, health, or reasonable use of property which is caused or threatened by the proposed use, impacts on the wetlands and water sources outside the area of the proposed use, and future activities reasonably related to those activities. One that it doesn't list, that I think is overarching in all of this, is trust. Trust of the applicant. You've heard a number of inconsistencies that Mr. Hiddle listed between the DEP application and your application. Mr. Kowaleski indicated that he is the owner of the property. I've been unable to find his name on any deed. Apparently, he was listed as a consultant to Douglas Dobrider, who was one of the owners, but he's clearly not listed as an owner and I don't believe that he can document that he is. I'd be happy to see that documentation. But there, in addition to the environmental impacts, there are significant second and third order effects which this commission cannot under review or consider, such as the Hammock River, shellfish beds, harbor and the beach. But one big one is the fire hazard that will force a very expensive alternative to the Clinton Volunteer Fire Department that could cost us millions of dollars a year. The downside liability is infinite. The upside opportunity is negligible. Now, the people here tonight who are in opposition to this are contrary to something that Vince said here, they are not a mob. They are your neighbors. They're not angry with you. They're on your side because I think you're here to do the same thing that they're here to speak to. So they're not angry with you, at least not yet. You are not here to do the popular thing, I understand that, but you're here to do the right thing. And at this time, I think they are one the same. We do not inherit the environment from our parents. We borrow it from our children. I'd like to return to the issue of trust for just a minute and say, kind of paraphrasing to the departed Johnny Cochran, "If the applicant lies, you must deny." Don't be intimidated by Mr. Cronin or his law team. They have forced the Planning and Zoning to accept a settlement that was basically spot zoning, which is against state statutes. Don't become a victim of that kind of intimidation. We're depending on you to stand tall. We know it may take courage, but the people who are with you are with you all the way and I thank you for your service.
That was an improvement over there. Thank you, Kirk, and thank you very much for pointing out there are things certainly of interest to all the residents here that, as you acknowledge, we cannot consider, okay? Just wondering, I, thank you for pointing it out. This is Dave Borg. 85, Founders Village. Let me just hope, Dave King, you're up next.
I'm opposed to the application. In my background, in my background, I have some applicability to this proposal as I worked for an industrial metals recycler for 38 years. I was the lab manager, ended up being the executive vice president of the company. Over the years, we faced many of the technical challenges I feel this facility will face. We also operated our own truck fleet, relied extensively on commercial trucks, also rail service, which is much of what this facility is planning on doing. We operated heavy equipment similar to what this facility has listed in its application to the state of Connecticut. We had issues at the facility I worked at. Recycling methods with oils, dusts, runoff, groundwater contamination, wetlands contamination. So I have seen a lot of stuff that is being talked about here. I have several topics to go over, but I want to just note to all in attendance here, there is a great report that was done by Green Seal Environmental that was, it was done for the state DEP and it's titled Construction and Demolition Waste Characterization and Market Analysis. And it's a really good primer for anyone to read about these volume reduction facilities. There, by the way, there are 29 of these facilities in the state of Connecticut as of 2013. This is not a unique facility. The first topic I want to talk about, and all these will be kind of drawn together so they are applicable to the wetlands, you may not think so right away. The number of trucks per day entering the facility. The application that was submitted to the state of Connecticut states very clearly that it is anticipated that there will be 200 trucks a day entering the facility. I have heard numerous comments over the last public hearings that there's going to be 100 trucks. Where did this, where did this 100 truck number come from? The application to the state is very clear, says it in numerous places, 200 trucks a day. That's a lot of trucks. Also on Saturdays, the application to the state says there will be 130 trucks, not 100. I guess we've been victims of fake news and misdirection. We, we heard a lot of discussion about the truck, trucks being turned over in the facility. One of the things that really struck me was that in the application to the state of Connecticut, the hours of operation are scheduled on weekdays from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, which is nine hours, and on Saturdays from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM, which is six hours. What that means is that on weekdays, there's 540 minutes available to receive trucks. What that also means is you have to receive, if you're receiving 200 trucks a day, that's one truck every 2.7 minutes. And on Saturdays, it's one truck every 2.77 minutes. It just means that the roads that lead to this facility are going to be blocked. Keep in mind, 200 trucks in means 400 trips per day on any road leading to the facility. That's a lot of trucks. To put it another way, any point on, if 145 is the main way to get to the facility, there will be a truck going by any point on that road every 1.35 minutes. That's a lot of trucks. The application also says the anticipated number of trucks is 200 a day on weekdays. Could it be more? Could be less, too, I guess. Inspection has been discussed here in numerous... Inspection has been discussed here in numerous, people who mentioned it. A truck, if a truck is going to be handled every 2.7 minutes, that means there are many different operations that have to occur in that 2.7 minutes of dwell time that the truck has in a facility. That 2.7 minutes also includes this inspection process. The facility I worked in inspected the receipts, and there is no way you can do an adequate inspection job in 2.7 minutes. Remember, you've also got to weigh it in, you've got to weigh it out, you've got to dump it, you've got to push it around a little. So 2.7 minutes, which includes this supposed inspection, I don't feel, in my opinion, it's not enough time. Just isn't, it won't work. The inspection would be cursory or nonexistent. It just, there isn't enough time to do it. To me, that means that unwanted materials will enter this facility. No matter what is done, you will have unwanted materials. They could be contaminants of some type, hazardous waste, who knows? The content and control of materials delivered, I worked for a long time in this type of industry. One thing we were never successful in doing is controlling materials coming into our facility adequately. There was just no way to do this. And we were buying scrapped metals, so people were getting paid to deliver to our facility. The way this business operates is they charge. So I think people will take a little bit more liberty with what goes into their, they're being charged, so I can throw in whatever I want, but be that as it may. We used to send letters to our customers. We made visits to our customers. We put out lists of prohibited materials. We had signage. We rejected loads. We charged customers for cleanups. We reduced prices. Remember, we paid for the materials coming in. They're not. The applicant's not. No matter what we did, we couldn't stop unwanted materials from coming into our facility. We just couldn't do it, practically. Now, this is a totally different situation. They're going to have hundreds of customers supposedly self-regulating what goes into these containers. I just don't see it happening, realistically, logically. Just, I just don't see it. The other issue was, well, the material will be dry. The dust issue aside, have you ever gone to a construction site or home where the CND waste is generated and seen the container covered sitting there? I haven't, or never covered. Well, not the last one, but waste removal prior to a storm event. The facility's application to the state, I believe, is listing that the maximum storage will be about 18,000 cubic yards of material. That's what's in the application. It's actually a little bit over that. That's the maximum storage. You know, this facility is going to receive 2,500 tons a day, which is 5 million pounds. But if a storm occurred where there was time to do something, imagine the logistics of trying to move out 18,000 cubic yards of material. If you had, if you were to move it out in trucks that had a cubic capacity of 30 cubic yards, that would be 600 trucks. You can't get 600 trucks in a reasonable amount of time, believe me. We had trouble getting trucks, when there was a storm event, we had trouble getting any dump trailers. And this type of waste is not dense. It is really a light waste, comparatively speaking, probably running 800 pounds a cubic yard or less. It's, the state, that state report I mentioned details more, their average for the facilities they looked at was more like 544 pounds a cubic yard, but you'll never get the trucks in need to evacuate the facility during a potential storm event. It will not happen. Rail is also proposed for this facility. Rail service is less, well, it's less reliable, in my experience, than truck service. We, I can remember waiting for days after we ordered a railcar Ford to arrive. I'm talking one railcar. I would guess this facility would need to load 5 million pounds a day. You're going to have to load 20 railcars a day. Now, that's not including the storm event. How many railcars would it take to get out the 18,000 cubic yards? It's challenging, to say the least. I have a question regarding existing conditions to the commission. I don't recall, and excuse me if I'm wrong, that anyone has discussed what conditions exist and if any chemical or environmental testing has been done to determine or attempt to determine what exists at the site and around the site at this time. If you, if you don't have a baseline that you can look at down the road that enables you to compare what exists with what did exist, how are you going to determine a liability? Has any testing been done? Has there been metals testing? Has there been testing for solvents of any type or oils? I haven't heard of any, maybe it's been done. My last point is prevention of contamination. I've driven by the facility numerous times, and if you look at this facility, the pad has a lot of seams and cracks. You see some vegetation. I haven't walked the site, you have, so you may know more about it. I don't want to trespass, but... This facility will be handling liquids, there's no question about it. There are seams and potentially cracks in this concrete pad. Eventually, liquids will percolate down in these seams and cracks and enter the groundwater and eventually the wetlands and watercourses in the area. It's only natural that this is going to happen. One of the biggest challenges we had at our facility was preventing spread of materials in the facility and in the surrounding environment. It's almost impossible to do, and in this facility, it's a major challenge because you have dusts, you're going to have water. To give one example is trackout, which the state of Connecticut was always on our case about. A truck drives into a facility, dust and/or mud or oils or whatever that's in the facility on the dumping pad get on the tires and are tracked out. And once they're tracked out of the facility, it's easy for them to then get in, runoff, groundwater, wetlands, et cetera. When you have materials like this, they're going to migrate no matter what you do. They are. It's nature. So I don't see how you're going to prevent materials from migrating out of the building, even without the flood, forget the flood part, and entering the watercourses surrounding the facility. Dust, well, I guess that's been gone over. I guess I could go on. You know, there's a lot of things I saw in the state application that didn't seem quite right, but there are many unknowns here. Offensive materials, in my view, it's my opinion, will enter this facility unfettered because there's no way to control it if they're entering, not at the volumes they're talking. These materials, offensive, you know, hazardous or not, will enter the environment around that facility no matter what you do. I've seen it, I know, I'm not a scientist, but I have firsthand knowledge, the environmental people reported to me at my job. So I just can't see where this facility should be. Thanks, Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Borg. Sir, was there anything you cared to submit this evening along with your oral testimony? No, you'd have to, you'd have to. Was there anything, you referenced things like CND waste market analysis? You don't have a copy, I don't know if you have a copy or if you have a URL or something to be about it.
You can look it up.
Thank you, sir. Mr. King, followed by Judy. Judy, and I apologize, Judy, Judy of 54 Pounders Village, she is here.
Thank you for hearing me. This morning, I did some cursory travels from the site. These are just estimates because they're roadway estimates, they're not the way the crow flies. The residential area, a tenth of a mile. That's 528 feet. Four tenths of a mile to the site from an industrial area. Three tenths of a mile to Route 1. Nine tenths of a mile to the school and the town hall. Nine tenths of a mile, estimated, to stop and shop, dump developments, and shop with them. They're unloading food. From the town dock, which is the biggest inland wetlands, to the intersection of Route 145 is 1.6 miles, 1.9 miles to the site. These distances are not the way the crow flies or the way the wind blows, but the roadways that lead to the site. Wind comes from all 360 degrees as far as direction. I asked the entire group, "You should visit the Essex Transfer Station." I went there on a dry day in September. The dust was blowing all over the place, and the stuff was coming out of the front of the building onto the tarmac. I said, "What goes on here? You're supposed to be moving this material." And he said, "The payloader is broke. We can't move it. That's real-life stuff that happens." Remember the fire at the Essex Transfer Station that lasted for almost a full week and thousands and thousands of gallons of water used to put out a chemical fire? How much of it was contained? I'll bet you nobody found out. And to answer the comment by Mr. Kowalski, he said, "Why didn't anybody come down and see the cleanup that we did? Why would anybody want to go by a sign that says, 'No trespassing violators will be prosecuted'?" Give me a break! You want to get arrested to look at the site? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. Is Judy here? I'm sorry, I can't read Judy. Oh, Judy is here. If you wish to submit them, certainly, sir, we'll accept them. Judy, Ron Parker.
My name is Judy Hirsch. I'm 54 Pounders Village, you know, getting the little things that I'm referred to. I have been here in Downers Village for 22 years since I retired. My condo faces the wetlands, which are about 22 feet away, and there is a light eight-foot embankment holding the land, wetlands from overflowing. The grassy area in my area, I'm not aware of the Unilever Quonset hut ever having anything delivered by train. Trucks would pick up boxes or bring boxes a few times a year. The Quonset hut was collapsed in a snowstorm five years ago, and here's another little ditty. In 1999, the wetland filled with water that when I went, knelt down, I could touch it, I could put my hand in it and squish it around. Many of the wildlife that lived in the wetlands were coming onto the grass in the Marley Patio. There were salamanders with yellow spots, turtles, raccoons, and black snakes that stayed a while until the water receded. These wetlands have an ecological, ecological, excuse me, of plants and wildlife that will be destroyed forever. If you allow this disaster to happen, our homes will be unlivable because of the serious health hazards these dumps are known to cause. Please don't let this happen. There is an ecological and environmental disaster that will destroy our way of life forever. It is our duty to protect, not destroy them. 100 trucks a day? Are you kidding me? This man said 200 trucks a day. I figured out at 100 trucks a day, it was 14.5 minutes to come in and out, and I think that's seven days a week, not six. Thank you for hearing me, and I really do appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Hirsch. Mr. Parker, followed by Bruce, Bruce Farmer? Is that Bruce Farmer? I'm not sure if I'm in there. Liberty Village?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
My name is Ron Parker. I am a professional engineer, a PE licensed by the state of Connecticut. I'm representing myself, my family, my friends, and the good neighbors of Clinton. I'm representing myself, my family, my friends, and the good neighbors of Clinton. My family and I have lived in Clinton for 38 years, and we've enjoyed the wetlands for all those years. My family and I live approximately half mile from the site of the proposed volume reduction facility at 30 Old Coast Road, owned by NIS 145 warehouse. I worked in the warehouse for a period of time. I worked for Chase Road Ponds and then for Unilever. While I was in the warehouse, I never saw any train traffic at all on that siding. I also then commuted to Essex with Unilever and passed the warehouse twice a day and never saw any rail traffic at all, nothing on that siding. So Judy, I'm with you, I didn't see a thing. I have serious concerns about the effects on the inland wetlands ecosystem by the airborne chemical and airborne particulates that will be released and dispersed by operations at this proposed facility. As was described by the applicant in the previous meeting, the inland wetlands commission, the proposed facility is effectively open to the environment and will be exposed to both water and wind, particularly wind. The offshore and onshore winds in Clinton, coupled with the variable wind patterns in the northeast, allow windborne particulates and gases to be carried for miles in all directions. Airborne particulates and gases will be released from the demolished materials to the atmosphere through the action of material handling that occurs during the unloading and loading of those trucks, but particularly during the volume reduction or redemolition of the materials operations slated to perform this proposed facility. Much of the area over which these particulates and gases will be carried is classified as inland wetlands and tidal wetlands or salt marshes. I live on this road, which is, you know, you get to go across Beach Park to get there. And I'd say we're salt marsh, tidal, south of Beach Park, and north of it is inland because of a setup they have with this drainage, two drains, one is four foot diameter pipe to the south, and then there is an upper drain which has four flutter valves. They actually allow the water to pass down the Hammock River, but they don't allow it to go back. So you're definitely inland waterways, inland, I'm sorry, inland wetlands. So anyway, the Hammock River flows through the inland wetlands nearest the proposed facility. It also flows past Clinton Town Beach, about a half mile away. But that's my estimate, but it's air mile. Stewart Bikini Federal Wildlife Reserve's two air miles from the proposed facility. That's a federal wildlife preserve. I reviewed a solid state waste storage volume list that was provided by the applicant. Now, I want to just go over briefly, list the products, starting from the top. Aluminum, which you think is fairly important, but you add some sulfuric acid, your battery acid to that, you've got hydrogen emanating by that. Antioxidants, poison, damages the kidneys and central nervous system, fatal to wetlands, mammals, and birds. Lead acid batteries, when fully or even partially charged, rapid discharge can cause a battery to explode, releasing sulfuric acid, lead, and combustible gases. Batteries mixed was another one. Lithium iron batteries. If they're mechanically damaged in any way, lithium is exposed and exposed to water, the reaction produces heat, severe heat, lithium hydroxide, flammable hydrogen gas again. Open flames can result. This may be one of the reasons why some of these facilities kind of burst into flames when they're unattended or even attended. Nickel cad batteries, same thing, if they're mechanically damaged, you get hydrogen and oxygen released, and these are components of rocket fuel. Cadmium sulfide batteries, cadmium is white powder, which is easily dispersed by wind and weather. If mechanically damaged, cadmium can be released and be absorbed through the skin of animals where it causes kidney damage. Computer electronics contains, names all these batteries, lithium ion, ni cad. That was an ion. Used oil, toxic to plants and animals. A film of oil impairs natural plant processing such as photosynthesis and oxygen replenishment. Used oil contains lead, zinc, arsenic, cancer-producing organic compounds such as polysulfide or aromatic acids. That's unnecessary, sorry. Oil filters, they contain oil. Paints and stains, all drying oils, certain acrylics, synthetic polyester resins, which include paints, and many polyurethane products produce heat during curing. Thus, oil-soaked rags, paper, possibly cardboard, might smolder and ignite with flames even several hours after they've made contact. Appliances with CFC, chlorofluorocarbons are hazardous, cause we know to the ozone layer, and they affect all life on earth. Shingles, oxidized asphalt is used to laminate shingles. Dust and vapors from oxidized asphalt are irritants. Hazard warnings are as follows: Do not get in eyes, skin, or clothing. Avoid inhaling papers, shingles, or mists. You don't want to expose our wetlands creatures to that, I'm sure. Stainless steel, no measure of anything. Tires, tires out, gas carbon salt, carbon disulfide. The surface is toxic to kidneys, nervous system, and to the liver. Cardboard, highly combustible material, ferrous iron, iron no major use. Single stream is, is actually defined as a separation system for glass, plastic aluminum, steel, and fiber, which, so I don't know really what it's on this procedure. Sheet rock, calcium sulfate dihydrated gypsum. When water is added, it produces sulfur dioxide, which when inhaled, is poison to animals and birds. Plastics, organic compounds, they oxidize quite well. Caliber wire, no major adverseness. Clean wood, highly combustible. Concrete breaks in water enforcement, all product airborne particulates, when disturbed, water consists of cements and limestone. Limestone consists of lime or calcium oxide. A wetland study in Sweden showed that calcium oxide severely adversely impacted spagnum mosses. Processed construction and demolition, waste insulation. Durafone, this is, cause organic damage, central nervous systems of mammals and birds, peripheral nervous system, upper respiratory tract, skin, eye, lenses, according to this. Fiber board, polyurethane foam, animals can sustain major permanent organic damage, toxic to aquatic life.
Mr. Parker? Yes, I'm sorry you interrupted, sir, but we do, we do have your written testimony. I'm just getting concerned about the late, it's eight o'clock already.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
I don't want to cut you off, but we do have your written, are there any other additional major points you want to make? Because like I said, what you gave us, it's going to be part of the record, we'll review it. I just want to make sure we have enough time for the other folks who wish to speak.
Thank you. I appreciate the question. The residency for population of the wetlands has been our pride and joy for many decades. Male and elderly species in remight have also established themselves in the wetlands and have added to a vibrant and growing ecosystem. The wetlands of Clinton, West Brooklyn, Shore, and Shore in general were definitely adversely affected by the facility operations described in the applicant. I urge the inland wetlands commission to withhold approval of the proposed value reduction facility. Thank you very much.
We have a copy, we do have a copy. Thank you, sir, and I apologize for asking you to speed up. Bruce here, Liberty Village, what's your name? Oh, that was you. I didn't prove your handwriting, did I, Bruce? And then Ellen Kavanaugh, follow us.
I'm a lefty, so it's a challenge. It's always been a challenge. I'm going to sit up here, it's okay. Good evening, everybody. Bruce Farmer reside on Liberty Village in Clinton, and I've lived there for 34 years. I am opposed to placing a recycling facility in Clinton, actually anywhere. And because I was one of the prior first electmen, I reached out to our legislators and my deep contacts and other towns and city leaders. And here's what we know. The recycling industry is actually not regulated or monitored as strict as we would all like it to be, including deep and our legislators. There are just too many loopholes in the regulations at this point in time. And historically, once facilities of this type get up and running, their capacity, processing, and transportation activity will increase dramatically. Just check with other locations where facilities of this type now exist. I did that very thing myself, and it's true. The owners say that they take health and safety precautions, which is probably true, but only as far as required by certain limited regulations and requirements. And please remember, state monitoring will be reduced to almost zero because of all the cutbacks. And you can check, deep and several other agencies have not replaced the staff that they have gotten rid of, unfortunately, or if they have, it's with kids right out of school. Also, the owners of the facility have no control whatsoever over the safety and health compliance by either the trucking companies or the railroad container car companies. And Amtrak, not them, will control all train car load schedules activity, not the facility owners. And as others said tonight, there's going to be quite a spillage out onto Route 145. Key points for the commission here tonight are that the proposed screening that they came up with, that plan for screening, will not prevent toxic, very small particles of construction debris from entering the wetlands, and a storm scenario could be catastrophic. I mean, I could go on and on and on about these very dangerous planted particles regardless of whether they're in a dry or wet form. But if, for example, if a facility gets trucks loaded with materials soaked from three straight days of rain, guess what? Are they going to really reject those loads like they said in a past hearing? That's real here. I could go on and on and on, but the bottom line is no scenario is good. And Clinton residents do not believe that this recycling business is what we want here. And we do not want to be exposed to these health risks or safety risks or environmental risks, nor do we want our children or our grandchildren exposed either. Our voices do make a difference in this process, and I ask that this commission tonight make a decision based on the facts presented by those with knowledge here about how bad the toxic effects will be as these facts pertain to your regulations. Thank you to the board for your effort.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Ellen Kavanaugh, not Ellen. And we will follow that with the folks who started off at the head of the list this evening. Can I get a copy of the list? Well, you don't have to do that. I was asking one of our able-bodied commissioners to do that. Thank you, Ellen. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ellen Kavanaugh. I live at 29 Founders Village. This application has no redeeming value. What it does bring to the table is risk to land, the water running alongside that land, and the unknown possibilities of subsequent injuries and changes to the environment. Clean air, clear water, a protected environment for the wetlands, those are the things that will be put to risk if this proposal is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your succinctness. That was, Dave Bouts, spelled by Dennis Gaglioni.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Dennis Gaglioni. I've lived in town for 40 years, and I think Clinton is a great town, but this facility doesn't belong here because either by accident, by environmental problems, by mistakes, time and again, something will happen, and the area will be contaminated, and it could be forever. And so the problem is forever is forever. It's a long time. So I'm asking the board to consider not giving away or selling away the future of Clinton, Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. You skipped over Dave Bouts, is Dave here? And Dave will be followed by Peggy Adler.
Good evening. Dave Bouts, two Rosemary Lane, Clinton. I stand in opposition to this plan. I hold some of the views that Bruce has, and I'm concerned very much about compliance and our ability to enforce, once compliance is not met. Again, I stand against it.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Peggy Adler, followed by Robert Bishoff.
Peggy Adler, five Liberty Street. I'm opposed to the SR and our industrial waste recycling facility proposal currently before Clinton's IWC for both environmental and aesthetic reasons. Environmentally, I feel this facility's day-to-day operations may pollute the surrounding wetlands, and whether it be a fire or flooding, might discharge pollutants into adjoining wetlands. Additionally, Connecticut's Department of Agriculture is concerned about the adverse impact this facility might have on our shellfish beds. Aesthetically, the proposed facility would be diagonally across from that part of Clinton's village zone, which runs along the west side of Route 145 to the railroad tracks. Planning and zoning created the village zone to maintain the character and scale of small, homely village. It is characterized with government, folk, and religious structures, which are on generous open lots as well as residential scale buildings. The village zone is meant to ensure that new development or redevelopment within it is consistent and compatible with the character of the zone's current streetscape. Its objectives include maintenance of the village scale by preventing erosion of new structures other than civic buildings, which are noticeably larger than the current residential scale buildings. Reduction of visual clutter, and the establishment of architecture and landscaping, which reflect the shoreline nature and history of Clinton. Promotion of the zone as an attractive extension of the business district while encouraging pedestrian activity, and adherence to strict site and architectural design standards meant to promote new development of residential scale, which will harmonize and be compatible with those already in the existing village zone's streetscape. The proposed facility does not meet any of these criteria, although it would be just outside the village zone, is this what Clinton really wants adjacent to it? Thus, I urge the IWC to reject this dangerous proposal.
All right, well, that ends public comment. Thank you, Ms. Adler. Robert Bishoff, followed by, I hope I got your name correctly, Richard?
Hertembees.
Hertembees? Do I have that right? It's close enough. All right, you're up next, sir.
Yeah, it still works good. Members of the inland wetlands commission, my name is Robert Bishoff. I live at 48 Wood Drive in Clinton, and I've been a Clinton resident since 1981. The primary purpose of the inland wetlands commission is to protect the wetlands. Clinton has had a long and challenging history with wetlands and groundwater issues. It includes struggles to contain waste sites at the empty Stanley Bostich and Ponds Unilever properties, where concerns rose about possible contamination of the wetlands and tributaries to the Hammont Acid River and of the Hammont Acid River itself. To members of this commission, I only ask, did you study this application and ask yourself, is this industrial waste recycling plant located in a flood plain going to be able to protect the adjacent wetlands which are only feet away? Will it be able to contain the contamination by hazardous materials that will be passing through by the tonne load on a daily basis, and possible contamination from which will drain directly into the inland and tidal wetlands and tributary rivers, those in turn flow into our town harbor and our town beach? If you can stand before this group assembled tonight and assures that we won't be here three years or even three months from now, that the rate destructive storms seem to be tiring in New England, and arguing what went wrong despite all the warning signs from concerned environmental engineers, if you are confident that this plan is in keeping with the mandate of this commission to protect the westlands first and foremost, then I say vote for it. However, if you, like me and the majority of the town citizens who have gathered in this room tonight, and the thousands of Clinton residents who have signed online petitions believe the use of this property poses an immediate threat, the use of this property poses an immediate threat to the inland wetlands... the use of this property poses an immediate threat to the inland wetlands, the nearby tidal wetlands, and the tidal creeks, streams, and rivers of empty little Long Island Sound at the Clinton Town Beach and Harbor. If you, like me, cannot understand how a screen with one-inch mesh will hold back liquid waste and indeed smaller solids during a hurricane or winter storm produced from emergency that could unleash a deluge of four-plus inches of rain in a few hours. If you, like me, cannot understand how a plant of this design will be able to contain its contents in top wind speeds and floodwaters of a simple Category 1 hurricane hurricane, 95 miles per hour, striking during an astronomical high tide and keep from spewing toxic fluids to the wetlands. If you, like me, have experienced a 100-year flood, which by definition is one that has a 1 in 100 chance of occurring and can deter multiple times in a year, our recent experiences with this winter storm flooding and widespread power outages should be a wake-up call. If you, like me, remember the flood of June 5, 1982, when 10.47 inches of rain fell in 24 hours, and when my wife and I barely made it home across the 145 bridge as the floodwaters engulfed the road and swept both the rear bridge and road away, we've seen what a 100-year flood can do. Members of the Inland Wetlands Commission, if you, like me and the thousands of other aforementioned Clinton citizens, recognize that the use proposed for this property to recycle industrial solid and hazardous waste, no matter how many times it is modified and tweaked, is not suitable for this environmentally sensitive location, then it's time to put an end to this application. I, for one, don't want to be here in the future shaking our heads at what went wrong and who to blame. I urge you to vote to reject this application in its entirety.
Mr. Bishoff. Richard? Just coming in. Richard will be followed by Dave Arminia. Some of you take your handwriting lessons from Bruce Farmer.
Hello. My name is Richard Hertibees. I'd like to address the commission as my neighbors. I live at 18 Mallard Lane, which is adjacency to the Hammond River. In fact, I live on the Marshland. I was a practicing scientist for 45 years in my career. And the long list of chemistry that was read by the physical engineer that spoke to us earlier, I'm very familiar with. Most of them are heavy metals. If you look at the sheer volume of material which has been outlined by several of the speakers, I think an analysis would enlighten you to the amount of particulates that will be put in the air. In this room alone right now, there's at least 10,000 particles per square meter. In a facility of that nature having monitored air qualities for our industry, there would be millions of particles per cubic area. All of those materials that were listed are irritants to the nervous system, irritants to the respiratory system. They will affect the floor and fauna of the environment, three-dimensional. The leachate has been addressed, I think, by many people. What will end up in the soil, what will be tracked out onto the roadways, what will go into the airborne environment is insidious. There is no way to take a plant which will reduce these materials and not put those airboards in. And I think it's the responsibility of the citizenship and our commission to responsibly understand what we will be admitting to the environment. That study, if it was done, will show the hundreds and hundreds of patterns of carcinogens that will become airborne, and that's not considerable, ladies. That study, I think, is necessary to be completed before considering whether or not you would allow the environmental impact that will happen as a result of this facility. Thank you for your comments.
Dave Arminia, followed by Lynn Posner.
Hello. Hey, everybody. I'm Dave Arminia. I've lived in this town pretty much my whole life. I can remember riding my bike from my house down Route 1, now over to Log Cabin to work there when I was a kid. I remember when we had a movie theater in town, the big screen outdoor kind. I know a lot of you guys remember that. It was a long time ago. Anyways, I'm not an engineer or environmentalist. I'm just a citizen of this town. And it's really obvious that if you start driving trucks around, and they're tracking these particulates, as they're called, all over, and they get into the air, we're all going to be tracking them into our homes. I'm not going to feel comfortable letting my daughter ride her bike down the street because she's going to be breathing that air. And you don't know what's causing all the cancers that we're getting nowadays. It's coming from every direction. So seriously, think about what you're... Seriously, help us think about this. So I was asked to speak by a number of people because of what I do for a living. Not to make it a commercial, but I knock on doors for a living, and I talk to a lot of people. Chances are, I've knocked on some of your doors. If I haven't, I will. And anyways, you know, one of the most common objections I get from people when I meet them is, "Dave, we don't have time to invest in what you're selling because we're not staying here. We're leaving. We're leaving town. We're trying to get out of here." Okay? I'm not trying to get out of here. I want to stay here. This is where I live. This is the place that I came back to after school and where I want my kids to grow up, my daughter. You know? And it's a place I'm proud of. So I think it's important that, and it's great that everybody turned out to support this. And I just want to make sure that you guys know that I'm definitely opposed to what's proposed here on 145. I mean, I've lived on Egypt Lane for the last 10 years. I lived on Ironworks Road 10 years before that. When I was a kid, or younger, before I got married, kid. I lived over at Founders Village, okay? I lived there. It's right there. There's literally... Those people are going to be breathing the air that the trucks are kicking up. They're not going to know or understand the effect on their health until it's too late. So essentially, in my opinion, you're killing them. If you let this happen, you're killing people. All right?
Thank you, Dave. Lynn Posner. And please keep the applause to Bearman. Lynn will be followed by Sean Clayton.
My name is Lynn Posner. I live at 49 Founders Village. I'm opposed to this application because I believe the applicant has not shown sufficient evidence that the aggregate will be appropriately contained and that pollutants won't leach into the swell and from there into our wetlands and waterways. I'm also opposed because I live within 20 yards of the wetlands that can potentially be polluted by this facility and within 200 yards of the actual building. Also, wet materials containing toxic waste will likely leach from the trucks transporting the materials in and out of the property. I hope you deny this application.
Thank you, Ms. Posner. We've got Sean Clayton, followed by Phil Seng. Sean here? No, most of us will go to Phil. And if Sean returns, and if someone knows Sean, you can point him out. Insert him back into the lineup. Phil will be followed by Charlie McKenzie.
Good evening. Whoops. Good evening. Phil Sengel, James Vincent Drive. Thank you, Inland Wetlands Commission. I have a small appreciation for what you do. It's not easy. I just wanted to say that one day I was driving down Route 81 and made the turn up on High Street, and I looked on my right, and there was a CVS site. And I had an epiphany. There's been a lot made of the material, demolition material that will be coming into a facility like this and that no one will know what's in these truckloads. So they just were starting the demolition. Good timing. So I found a little place to pull over, and I watched for a while, and they were tearing down stuff, throwing it in trucks. Nobody looking at it. I ran my air, and I came back, watched for a while, same thing. Next couple of days, I came by and looked, and they're loading up the stuff. Nobody's inspecting it. And many people have said, that's a total fantasy that anybody will know what's coming into this facility, whether it's batteries, whether it's acid, or oil, or any other kind of chemicals, or solid materials that maybe have that as to our health. And so I would just ask you to consider that. So I didn't hear or read somewhere that the applicant's attorney said you should not consider what members of the public say. Well, this is an eyewitness account of what happened in our own town, and it's just one little tiny example of what will be going into this facility, which will then leach into the environment. So I hope you will find the factors that you are allowed to consider and deny this application. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Phil. Phil, just one point, just for the record. I want to make sure, since you're on the board of selectmen, you were speaking as a resident, as a citizen.
I'm speaking as an individual.
Thank you very much for clarifying. Charlie McKenzie, followed by Steve Trinkus.
Phil, also a veteran. Thank you for your service, Phil. Charlie McKenzie, 2 Joshua Lane. I've lived here in town since 1979. Had the quite honest privilege and honor of working for Cheesebroil Ponds for 25 years within their distribution and transportation group. The applicant has made a lot of selling tools that everything they're going to do is similar to what was being done at the site when Cheesebroil operated it. And it is mind-boggling to think that they can even use the word "similar" when they're bringing in hazardous waste and things that are going to contaminate our ground, our lands, and the people that live here. We already know that our population suffers from a variety of cancers. We know that our children and our elderly suffer from respiratory problems. I have, three out of four of our children have asthma and respiratory. Why? Well, if we bring this into our world here, that will become worse. People will have to wear masks when they go outside, or not go outside at all. Our water, most of us are on boil water. That will have to be tested and potentially be contaminated, and then we'll all have to tap into the reservoirs with the Connecticut water and increase our costs, increase our taxes. There is absolutely no benefit to bringing this operation into our town. And to think that it's only going to work nine hours a day, five days a week, and six hours a day on the Saturday, and move all of that waste and debris and hazardous in and out is unquestionably incorrect. When Cheesebroil operated, they were bringing in packaged health and beauty aids, health and beauty aids. The only hazardous item they had was Prince Maccherbelli perfume and cologne. We wore it. The shaving cream, barbasol, and hairspray, rinse. Now, those were not hazardous by description, not hazardous by transportation, other than if they were to be transported by air, and they were allowed to be transported by air because they were what classified then and now as other-than-regulated materials. You're going to be bringing in other-than-regulated materials that really are regulated, but you have no way of knowing what they are. And as Phil said, when you saw that site that's going to become our CVS landmark being demolished, and then the dumpsters being filled, they didn't care what they were digging up with their dozers and what they were bucket-loading into there. Cheesebroil brought in 10 or 20 trucks a day. At the end of the month, end of the quarter, it got a little bit heavier. But those trucks were operated by quality carriers with quality equipment, with fleets that were always inspected, fleets and drivers that were ruled and governed by the laws of DOT. You're not going to have that with whatever's coming in here into open gondola cars, open gondola trucks, open bay vehicles untarked. Our roads are going to become as dirty as the site. I ask you not, on behalf of our children, our grandchildren, and their children who also want to live here, not to ever think that this could be allowed and that it won't do whatever one here has said. As a basic layman, as the people who are more technically involved, more technicist, our scientists, you would do this town, the people, our community and our state, a disjustice if you were allowed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Trinkus. He will be followed by Jim Connolly. We've got... Thank you for that, Mr. Trinkus. So if Jim Connolly would wish to speak, followed by Pam Fritz. And then, Mr. Trinkus, you'll be up unless there's anyone else who has not signed up and who would wish to speak.
My name is Jim Connolly. I live at 11 Eurquod Drive. And I just passed in the online petition that we started on February 23 of this year. The petition basically says, "We, the undersigned residents of Clinton, Connecticut..." And mind you, we only have about 13,000 people who live here. We only have about 5,000 people, adults, who registered to vote. And we only have about 3,800 people vote in local elections, while more than 2,400 people signed this petition online. So the IDBC has a copy of the people who signed it. And I can't really add too much to what many wise and eloquent people have stated tonight. I was very impressed by what Mr. Farmer said, and by what Mr. Carr said, and by what Mr. Sengel said in particular. And if you can get these three people to agree on anything, you should take it very seriously. The people of Clinton, Connecticut are solidly united against this proposal. And we're not united against it because we're a bunch of nimby kooks and simple peasants who are to be ridden over by people who came from New Jersey to take over a slab. Let me just point out one thing. We don't know who these people are. And even if we knew who they were, they could sell out to somebody else who would run it in an even worse way the next day. Number two, we don't really know what they're bringing in, what the kinds of materials they're going to be bringing in. They've made a long list of what they are, and we've heard how dangerous they are. But we also know that they could very easily get permits to bring in stuff that's even worse. Number three, once this stuff gets in, whatever it is, we have no idea how it will be going out. People in this town have a collective memory. We know that that rail spur that they're talking about has probably not been used for 35 years. We know its condition is terrible, and it's rusty all the way up to where it joins the main line. We also know that these people haven't bothered to really check with Amtrak to find out when they would have a chance to actually get onto those. So really, we have no idea when this stuff would be coming out of it. And if it's going to be coming in, and we don't know when it's coming out, we've got to assume it's going to stay there and pile up and be even more dangerous. Number four, we have no idea what they would do in the event of a flood. We have no idea. Okay? They've made a couple of small accommodations to it. We got a little bit of mesh and everything. Frankly, I can do better stuff out of my garage than what they're talking about.
On order, Mr. Chairman. I don't think it's necessary for anyone in this audience to be rude to people that are applicants. And I would request that this speaker, whoever he is, to be nicer to our guests.
Well, thank you, Madam Oliver, whoever you are, but I'm going to continue.
I don't think you need to be rude, sir.
I thank you for your opinion. Okay? But I'm going to continue. All right? Number five, we have no idea what's going to happen in the event of a fire. Okay? In the event of a fire, thousands and thousands of gallons of liquid would have to be poured onto this site by our own fire department and all of the other fire departments in the area. People who witnessed and had to participate in putting out the giant fire that took place at the recycling facility in Essex were practically traumatized by the experience. at the recycling facility in Essex were practically traumatized by the experience. Now, that particular dump is at the end of Dump Road in Essex and is not in a fragile ecological area. Having thousands and thousands of gallons of materials going liquid, spreading out into the materials to put out a fire at this facility would go right into the wetlands and poison our weapons. I'd like to apologize to Commissioner Oliver for the fact that I'm intense. I'd like to apologize to the applicants. Okay? We don't really know who they are, but I'd like to apologize to them. I'd also like to tell them to get out of our town.
Attorney Hudson, followed by Mr. Trinkus.
And I'm going to make this very brief because you've heard from me at the previous two hearings. Summarizing all the things that have been said here tonight, there has been a lot of important things stated, but specifically a lot of technical information that's been provided by people who have specific information relating to the effect on the weapons. I think Kurt Carr well-stated the law, the considerations of the things that you need to consider, which I'm sure you're aware of, and John Bennett will undoubtedly remind you. But I think that despite all these other things, this does focus back on the technical considerations. I do want to repeat one thing because the applicant brought this up at the last meeting and it came up again tonight. And I think this is indirectly related, and that is this concept that this is a continuation of a permitted use of the ZORI there before. We've looked at this in great detail, and make no doubt about it, this is not in any way, shape, or form the use that was printed before. That'll come up in the zoning issue, but I think it's important to know that based on our opinion and looking at this, this is not a permitted use at all. So, bottom line is that they're going through a process, but I think right now, we know it's a weapons process, but this is going to continue for a long period of time. But I thank you for listening to me and to all these people, and I thank Kurt Carr for saying all the legal stuff that had to be said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Mr. Trinkus, and then if Mr. Clayton managed to rejoin us. John Clayton, no? And then anyone else who wishes to speak.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner. Steve Trinkus, I'm a consulting engineer representing the interveners. I have the final letter, which I will summarize. This is based on the applicant's email at the end of last week. There's been a lot of talk on stormwater impacts, and the initial second page and a half of my letter talks about the various pollutants. They're called non-point source pollutants, and these come from land use applications. We have total suspended solids, which are very fine sediments. They're not the coarse sand, they're the real fine stuff that stays in solution. And because they stay in solution, they take a long time to settle out. Those eventually settle out in streams and wetlands, which can affect the ability of the aquatic species that reside on the bottom of the wetlands to continue living if you bury the gravel substrate with sediment. Nutrients, we have phosphorus and nitrogen. Now, most people say those come from fertilizers, and that's true. However, we also get 40% of our atmospheric nutrient load from the atmosphere through rain yesterday, right now. This was documented and studied by North Carolina State University. So you have a 90,000-square-foot building here, you have a parking lot. You will have atmospheric deposition that when it rains, it washes off and will run off into the wetlands. While phosphorus is more of a concern in freshwater systems, nitrogen is a major problem for tidal environments because nitrogen will kill wetland grasses, and then once the grasses die off because of increased nitrogen loads, the wetlands become more susceptible to erosion during not even 100-year flood events, but simply large wind-driven events. So you lose the functional benefit of the wetlands. As was pointed out earlier, the rail spur has evidently not been used for 35 years, give or take. So I think you have to assume that everything coming into the site and leaving the site is coming by truck. There has been no evidence provided by the applicant of any agreement with Amtrak, Metro North, whoever owns the railroad, of the use of that line. So you have to assume that everything is by truck. So the comments that have been previously provided by members of the public on the number of truck trips in and out are realistic, and that's how this material is coming in and out. The increased truck traffic in and of itself, irregardless of the material in the trucks, is going to increase the metals and hydrocarbon loads on the site, which ultimately are going to get washed through the drainage system and into the wetlands. One of the other aspects that we haven't really talked about is thermal impacts. You have a metal roof that bakes in the sun, you have a parking lot that bakes in the sun. When it rains, when water hits that, you get from thermal dynamics, the water takes the heat from the receiving surface, and then that runs off. And a lot of cold-water wetlands are very susceptible to rises in temperature, at least for the aquatic species that live there. The applicant has now proposed to remove the eastern end of the slab where they had an aggregate pile and to do a constructed wetland system. However, if you look at, I believe it's sheet three of their plan set, this proposed wetland treatment system is getting runoff from the wetlands that's on the northern end of the site and a little bit of the driveway that is directly to the north of it. It's not getting the area from the truck scales, the parking lot, or the building roof. That is all going based on the watershed map to the hydrodynamic separator on the west side. So this constructed wetland, which A, is not designed anywhere close to the compliance of the DEV Storm Order Manual, is pretty much not going to treat any of the important impervious runoff that's going to be generated from the site. There's also claims that this is going to provide 12,000 cubic yards of compensating flood storage. That's not true. The applicant has done a storm order analysis. When you run the 100-year storm event, you get a water surface elevation of 5.16 feet. The elevation above that, yes, is available for flood storage, but not anything below it because theoretically by the model, that's runoff from your own site. So they're not providing as much compensating storage as they assume. There are some technical issues on the plans. If you look on the survey maps, we still do not have the Land Tech wetlands line shown on the survey map. But yet it's on the site plans via Laredo, so I guess I would question, you know, who surveyed the Land Tech line, and why is it on one map and not the other? So from a regulatory standpoint, the map is not in compliance with your regulations. There's also a discrepancy in topography in the southeast corner where this wetland system is going to be. The survey map shows two-foot contours. On the Laredo map, all of a sudden, there's a one-foot contour, elevation seven, that's shown there, but yet not on the survey map. As the survey map is used by all of us engineers as base maps, I question, where did the additional information come from, and how was it determined in the field? That should be done by the surveyor. So we have inconsistent information on the two plans. They also proposed to take down all the trees on the slope between the eastern end of the building slab and the driveway, but yet they're not regrading the whole area. So one of my questions is, why take all the trees down? Trees provide a wonderful environmental benefit, and they don't need to come down, but yet the applicant's proposing that. Regarding the singular hydrodynamic separator now that we have on the west side prior to the drainage going to the intermittent stream between rail lines, the applicant has submitted reams of data from contact that it's going to be at least 80% TSS removal rate. Page five of my report, you will see an excerpt from the University of New Hampshire 2012 annual report. Second line from the bottom is online hydrodynamic separators. And if you go to the third column, 29%, that's the removal efficiency of an online separator. That's what this system is going to be. It's not going to be anywhere close to 80%. Now, the UNH facility has been in place for four years. It is a nine-acre commuter parking lot used by their students, and the treatment research center is at the end of the pipe. So it's a normalized system. They look at many different systems, so the flows coming into all of the systems are normalized as far as volume, flow rate, and concentration. So it allows them to evaluate all these different systems on an equal basis. And this has been eight years' worth of data, and that's what they have found. And actually, they found in the winter that the rate is actually lower than 29%. This is an annualized rate because they believe, due to the chloride in the water, that it actually inhibits the ability of the sediment particles to settle out. The applicant has made modifications to their flood plan, but I would ask the commission to think about what happened yesterday. We had a rainy day, luckily not snow, thankfully, but we had some periods of very intense rainfall events. If this occurs, you know, who makes the decision whether you put these boards up or not? And these are not something that's going to be up and down. The other thing that struck me was, we have this now mesh system that has 1/16 of an inch holes, but as other speakers have said, particulate matter can easily go in and out. But based on the detail on the plan, these were set, the mesh is tied to poles set in concrete sonotubes, for lack of a better term, which I assume are on the slab. It doesn't say that these are removable, but they have to be to get the material in and out of there. But if they are fixed systems, how are you going to put them up if you need them? There's just a lack of information as to how this system will work. In the stormwater report and the analysis of this wet basin, they show their outlet pipes as 12-inch pipes. However, on the survey and the site plants, it's 15-inch. So whether it's a typo or not, the big problem is, is you are, two things, you're overestimating the storage and underestimating the flows out of the basin. I mean, the plants are clear. I've looked at both the survey and the Laredo plant, it shows 15-inch, yet you have 12 in there. So all of the model results, if you're using incorrect pipe sizes, pretty much are invalidated in my professional opinion. So that's the end of my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Trinkus. Sorry, my bad. Thank you, Mr. Trinkus. Is there anyone else who, you wish to speak, sir?
I would like to.
Sure, certainly. Come forward, state your name. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Creed. My name is Bill Stewart, and I'm not on your list, but I've got passion and I have to get it out. I, you can laugh, too. I, oh, come on. I went on Google, and I found that as of 2014, there were 1,322 supersites in the United States. Now, I'm not predicting this could be a supersite, but it's not an impossibility. I lived in Lynn, Mass. for a while, and right in the middle of the city, and it was a city 10 times, maybe more, than Clinton, and it had two huge GE plants. The one on Federal Street was some time ago, removed, and it's many, many acres of flat cement with a chain link fence all the way around it, right in the middle of town, right where the Carmen is. Any of you familiar with Lynn?
Yes, sir.
Well, it used to be the shoe city, and the Carmen is enormous. It has an eel and a soul with a space between it. I just think, how many of you, because I want to take the long, possible picture, way up. 35 years from now, assuming that that has turned into a supersite, because the GE in Lynn was enormous, and it was all brick building and all manufacturing indoors. There was no outdoors, there was no dumping of trucks, it was all enclosed, and it turned into a supersite. Now, how many of you would like to have in your heritage that 35 years from now, when that's declared a supersite, that your family that's left can say, "My family played a good part in that"? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your passion and your comments. And just to clarify, I think you referred to a super fun site. So, thank you. Ma'am, you, both of you wish to speak?
I'd sign something.
Is there?
I'm bored on the other side.
Is there another sheet floating around, if anybody aware of it? Well, certainly, come up, ma'am. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Mary McDonald. I live on West Main Street, and I moved to Clinton in 1960 with my family. And I went to school, and every day I would travel down River Road, up Knob Road, down Knob Road. And it's been many years because I had moved to California, had moved back. And I've lived here a few years since, the last few years. And I went down Knob Road the other day. It used to be houses and wetlands. I don't know what happened down there, and I wasn't here for all that, but it is an industrial bunch of stuff. It looks like something from another planet. It's all, it's completely ruined the nature of what it was. And what is going on now, I have one question. Why can't this be put, maybe I'm not politically, you know, involved with politics, but why can't we vote on this as the people and see, you know, take a vote? Is it all up to just the few in this town, or is there a way to vote for it, then you guys can say, "Okay, the people don't want it, and we represent the people"? That's a question. Can somebody answer this question and answer, or?
I will endeavor to answer that, and Attorney Bennett can correct me when I'm wrong. But we are appointed to this commission, and we will be deliberating and voting on this.
And who appoints you? Do the people appoint you?
We are appointed by the board of selectmen.
Oh, is the selectman here? Is she here?
I'm not sure who is here, but that is the process.
Oh, so you're appointed, not voted by the people?
We are appointed, yes, ma'am.
Okay. That was just like, because I didn't understand why everybody couldn't just vote, as I thought that, you know, we lived in America and everybody could vote. I'm just, you know, one of those people that thinks that. And when I was here in 19, in the 70s, there was a proposal for nuclear power plants, which they built. And I had a son that was born, and he was healthy, eight and a half pounds, and he ate all organic food, and he was the most well-taken care of little kid. And he got acute lymphoblastic leukemia when he was 14 months old. And I was, the doctors were the hematologists, head of Yale, Dr. Pearson and Dr. Sue McIntosh, and the people from Washington DC, I'm not sure if it was EPA or who it was, but they came up here and did a study. And 70 kids in a triangle area that included Clinton and Madison had lymphoma and leukemia at that time from those power plants that were built and assured to the public that there were going to be no accidents and no health risk, and no health, you know, things that were going to, and those kids all died, including my son, who's three years old. And this thing that you're building now is so bad that nuclear power, when they had the accident before my son got the leukemia, which was proven in the study, this stuff here is going to be in the air, in the water, everywhere, and I really think that it really should not be here. And if the people who are proposing to have this in Connecticut, why not take it to a site that already is so polluted that they can't even build anything or have humans live on it, like in Bridgeport or something? I mean, not that the people in Bridgeport deserve it, but you know, this is a whole place in ruin, or the North Tuck Valley where they can't even drink the water, breathe or anything. Let's not take pristine wetlands and beaches and ruin it. And if the people don't want it, then I beg of you, please, I know I'm just a citizen, but I'm also a mother and a grandmother now. And I, they just brought in a bunch of stuff in heminacid from a GE power plant up north of Kent, Connecticut, which has spewed all kinds of chemicals that are so bad and cancer-causing, they took the sand and the soil from there and put it in the heminacid. And that's what people are going to be playing in this summer, unless you go to Mexico Point, they didn't get to that part. But all the rest of it is contaminated. So I just wanted to share with, you know, a conservative citizen who's very into the environment and wants to save the earth, although everyone in Washington votes against what the people want. And I'm hoping that there are people in this town that have a heart, not just thinking about the bottom line, which is, with the bottom line is money for a lot of the things that go on in this earth and is destroying us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. McDonald. Sorry for your loss. Was there any, we're running, let's see, time check, folks. You've got about a half an hour left, so if anyone else does wish to speak, please, I implore you to keep it brief.
I'll be brief. My name's Deb Anderson. I live on Christina Court. I'm a townie. I've been here since I was in fifth grade. I recycle, and I compost, and I believe thoroughly in handling hazardous waste in a responsible manner. But I'm diametrically opposed to this because I think it's the wrong location. If you look at the map up ahead, you'll see that the limitation of the property that the applicant has is surrounded by wetlands. And I looked at a topographical map, and it looks like all of this area that is undeveloped down here is downstream from the water. So that means that all of the wastewater, excuse me, I'm a little nervous, that would be directed towards the railway is then going to percolate and come down and go into the waterways. You don't have to be a scientist to know that water moves downhill, dust settles. So any of the dust particulates that will be coming off of that property will be going up into the air, come across the wetlands, and settle down onto the wildlife and the grasses that are there. I would say that humans are the only ones that can take care of this. The animals and the grasses cannot. I think it's our responsibilities as good citizens to say no. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Paul Capola, One Frederick Place. I became a father 10 months ago. All of your comments, your statistics, thanks.
Wait, that you can clap for.
Thank you. Everything everyone said tonight, I feel like you're talking directly to my 10-month-old son. He spends his days 0.4 miles at Clinton Childcare Services. If they're in, we're out.
Was there anyone else? Sir?
Yeah, actually, Paul is my son-in-law. I'm Bill Russell. I live at 119 Commerce Street. I've lived here for 40 years. During those 40 years, I worked as a civil engineer, and during that time, I've been involved in industrial waste water treatment systems. And one in particular was a plant that was built along the Houston River. And I can tell you that that plant was designed in such a way that all the floor spills and everything was contained and completely treated. It had to be treated at such a high level of purify that we had to do tests to prove that the minnows and fish could survive in the water that was treated. And I can tell you that this system here, I think it's misapplied because, you know, I think the engineers are looking at classical solid waste handling and containment that you would see around construction sites and containment berms and surrounding the dry waste and construction debris and pavement and so forth that's exposed to rainwater. My concern is that with the paved area here, that there's going to be a lot of debris that's going to be falling off the trucks, not even speaking of oil and grease. And the containment system for this is just inadequate, particularly the area that surrounds the collection of the material that's outside. It's not properly contained, it's just an ordinary kind of a... Kind of a berm that you would see in a construction area. But in fact, that area should be completely contained to contain 100% of the rainwater and then put into a treatment system, which would consist of particle filtration and carbon treatment, organic treatment to remove all the organics so that nothing could come out of it. And that water would be suitable to go into a waterway, such as a river or inland water area that is surrounding this entire facility. So that any... Anything that's falling on the paved area with trucks and the debris that falls off, and not even to speak of the oil and grease, is going to end up in a trench that's on the lower part of the map there, and that's going to go into the... Into that trench and ultimately into the waterways. I just don't understand how this system and the design and the solid waste can be put in such an area that's, you know, surrounded by inland waterway, not even speaking of hurricane and high water issues. I've lived down by the water for a good part of the 40 years, and I've seen, just in the last 40 years, I've seen water rise 10, 11 feet. And this facility is only 9 feet. But even that being said, just the containment and the waterway, this essentially is a containment system without any waste treatment capability at all. So that anything that goes into here is going to go into the waterway. Waste is not clean waste, even though they say it's commercial, construct, commercial demolition. All of those building materials, when they get wet, are going to contain toxins. Fish cannot... Fish and wildlife do not live with this stuff getting into our waterways. So I strongly urge the commission to reject this. I can really question that the design is sound. I can't believe that the DEP would even allow such a thing. I don't know if permits have been approved, but it's just astonishing to think that the DEP would even allow such a facility. So again, I ask you to reject it and keep up the fight and not be intimidated by the other side of the attorneys. When I put up a fight, we need to fight back and make it stronger.
Yes, sir. Was there anyone else? Darby, you want to talk? Okay. Go ahead.
I'll be brief. For the record, my name is Darby Hiddle, and I'm speaking on behalf of the intervenor, the abutting property owner to these. I was concerned about potential impacts to their property from this facility. I'm a Connecticut licensed environmental professional with more than 22 years of experience working throughout Connecticut and North America, and I've been a resident of Clinton since 1997. As an LEP, I am charged primarily with the responsibility of making decisions that are protective of human health and the environment. During the previous two public hearings, numerous legitimate items of concern have been identified by our team that, in my opinion, have not and cannot be addressed by the applicant due to the proposed use of the facility as a waste reduction facility. To summarize briefly a few of the more significant items that we talked about in the last two hearings, there's really no way to prevent wet loads from coming into the site. This has great potential to impact the wetlands. There's really no way of knowing whether hazards and materials are mixed in with the construction and demolition waste. And the idea that there would be sufficient warning time to remove all waste materials prior to a storm surge or hurricane is ludicrous. If the facility... This is one point that the applicant has not addressed, and the committee has not asked them to, you know, comment on, to my knowledge. But if this facility becomes an approved waste reduction facility, they could obtain a general permit for staging and transfer of up to 10,000 cubic yards of contaminated soil simply by mailing a check for $250 to the state of Connecticut. And since Clinton is not an environmental justice community, the residents of Clinton and the committee would basically have no opportunity to comment or provide input on that general permit. And as I said, I don't believe the applicant has commented on that concern of ours or whether the committee has asked them to. It's a major concern of mine as an environmental professional, because having polluted soil at the site is even a greater hazard than having the construction and demolition debris. Because under the general permit, the soil that gets staged and transferred under that permit does not need to be tested before it's brought to the site. That permit allows the permittee to stage the soil. Now, they did move the operations inside the building, but we don't believe the building's contained. So it's a main concern of mine. If this facility gets approved, I believe that that permit could easily be obtained. Next to last, the applicant... Just to recap, the applicant indicated not applicable to all potential impacts on their coastal consistency review form to the state of Connecticut. To my knowledge, it hasn't been amended, and there's been no comment as to why, you know, they believe there are no potential impacts to the resources. And lastly, as you make this important decision, please consider that it is the opinion of this licensed environmental professional, that if a significant release of hazardous waste were to occur at this location, the consequences could be catastrophic. We simply can't afford such a risk of potential damage to our wetlands, the town beach, and the harbor, because these resources are the heart and soul of our community. Thank you.
Okay. Last call. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Please, if you do have comments, anyone else, if there's something that has already been discussed, you don't need to reiterate it. If you've got something new to add, that's great.
So I just wanted to follow up because the gentleman was an LEP.
Sorry.
Kathleen, I'm on Long Hill Road.
Last name?
Payne.
Payne.
Yes. So the gentleman that just spoke is an LEP, and I'm an environmental consultant. I've been doing the work for 20 years, and I just wanted to highlight some of the items that others had mentioned. So it is true that staff at DEP is dwindling, and as a consultant, I'm often involved when there's been a complaint, and that's when there's action taken. And typically, there is no incentive for anybody to follow a lot of these regulations, and you will start to see people behaving when there are notice of violations against them. And as an LEP and a consultant, we are extensions of these regulatory agencies, because those regulatory agencies do not have the time to check up on these facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. That was very brief. Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so I do want to express my appreciation for all of you. You've been, again, fairly well behaved, I would say. And I truly appreciate the, given the passion on this issue, the almost complete absence of ad hominem comments. So truly, I appreciate that. I believe it is a little bit after nine, it's 9:03, and again, we do have to be out of here by 9:30. At this time, Mr. Andrews is here. I believe you'd like to give your opportunity to respond to things you had heard this evening. Again, if you could also be as pointed and brief as possible, thank you.
I'm with La Rero Engineering Associates, a professional engineer and a licensed environmental professional. I'll be as brief as possible. I just wanted to go over a couple of items tonight. First, I wanted to start with expressing our appreciation for your time and effort. I know many of you, including the audience, have done an awful lot of research to be able to present and consider this application, and we certainly do appreciate that investment. I'd like to run through briefly our site plan changes, and then I'm not going to go line item by line item in response to some of the information that we've gotten. We have submitted responses to the comments up through, obviously, tonight's, we haven't responded to that, but they have been submitted for the record as of April 11th. And then I'll close with a couple of items, repeat items that we have heard, repeat concerns, and how we're dealing with those. So the plan set has been modified, as I mentioned. And frankly, this was in light of some of the comments that we got from you, Mr. Chairman, your secretary, and some of the public with regard to concerns primarily associated with flooding. What we ended up doing is we prepared a site demolition plan, and we're proposing to demolish the slab located right here in the parking area, paved parking area located over here.
Sorry to interrupt. Mr. Andrew, just if you could reference the drawing sheet number?
Sure. Sheet number 8 of 12.
Thank you.
So the two areas I was referring to, one is this area where the aggregate stockpile used to be located, and of course, the eastern parking lot. The asphalt and concrete in both of those areas will essentially be removed. Transition now to our grading plan. In doing so, it opened up the eastern part of the site.
Again, sheet number?
This is sheet number 10 of 14. Opened up the eastern portion of the site and gave us the opportunity to actually provide some compensatory grading so that we could actually enclose the building and make the building watertight. So we modified the building, reduced the number of doors across the front. We had 12 doors, we now have eight. We maintain the same so that we can load gondola cars on this side. And we're providing a seven-foot knee wall that goes around the entirety of the building to a height of seven foot. And each one of the openings, we're providing with floodgates, and the floodgates are essentially panels that you deploy manually before significant rain or flooding event occurs. And they keep the interior essentially of the building dry. And we also made a modification in light of the fact that we went to the floodgates, we're able to lighten the screening material that we're providing on top of the floodgates. I've got a couple of detailed sheets right now. Sheet number 12 of 14. So this is the detail of our floodgate right up here. It's right in this area. And this is the detail, the revised detail of our screening structure right up here with the floodgates. So the screening structure, we're going to a 16-inch, 16th of an inch synthetic material, much lighter material, much easier to deploy. And we're proposing to leave that up on an as-needed basis that provides windscreen as well as certainly material screens. One other point I wanted to call attention to is the building is actually equipped with monsoon misters, and that's part of our solid waste application, and I failed to present that to you at the prior hearings. So this is an example of a monsoon mister. It's a device that provides a light misting throughout the timeframe that it's actually turned on. It's not a wet material. The last thing we would want is a wet material when we're shipping based upon weight. So it's a light mist, it's a dust control structure, and we typically use them in the waste industry indoors as well as outdoors, and they're used primarily to settle dust. So that is included in our application and would be a means certainly for us to maintain ocean compliance within the building as well as knock down any dust before it exits the building, which would certainly be our responsibility. So at this point, the building is watertight, it's fully equipped with dust controls, and it's got screened openings to contain wind-driven material and provide full containment for the building during a flooding event. The floodgates, I failed to mention, would be extended to elevation 13. The next item I just wanted to go over, I'm going to flip back to... Sheet number... Sheet 10. Okay. I just wanted to go over a couple of the details associated with the stormwater wetland that we proposed right over here. So we've created a four-bay area at the discharge. Now, remember, this wetland up here discharged through a pipe into this stormwater wetland. So this wetland here drains through a pipe, essentially comes out into here. There's other drainage from the site as well, albeit it's limited and it's primarily associated with the eastern portion of the parcel that discharges into this, the head, if you will, of that stormwater wetland. So we've provided a four-bay area there, and that four-bay's been designed at 10% of the water quality volume. And the structure itself, the basin itself, has been designed to retain the full water quality volume for the site. the full water quality volume for the site. So with that said, I'd just like to hit some of our closing remarks. Once again, I just want to reiterate all of our processing, with the exception of scaling trucks, is going to be done indoors. We're providing a fully sealed building that'll be essentially floodproof to an elevation of 13. We're providing dust control within the building, and we're providing dust control at our door openings. We'll work closely with the fire marshal and the fire protection consultant to address the concerns associated with fire. We share the same concerns, obviously. The town of Clinton has adopted a regulatory requirement associated with finished floor elevations, and it mandated that that finished floor within a floodplain area be constructed a minimum of one foot above the base flood elevation. So with that in mind, that's called freeboard, and that accounts for reductions in insurance, flood insurance, as well as sea level rise, the unknown in the flood that's a little bit more than a 100-year flood event. So I do believe that we have provided with the redesign that we've run through and resubmitted to you an adequate protection against sea level rise. We have to draw the line somewhere, and it appears that the town has adopted one foot above the base flood elevation as where that line should be. Further, I wanted to just call attention, once again, to the fact that this site will be engaged in a general permit for stormwater associated with industrial activities. That particular permit requires inspections and monitoring, semi-annual monitoring, quarterly visual monitoring, and submission of that data to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. That'll be done, that permit will be required as long as the facility endures. There's been some concerns related to stockpiling of soils, stockpiling of contaminated soil. Once again, I think we've addressed that concern. We're not going to apply for a general permit. We do have permitted soils in our application with DEEP. Once again, those soils would be limited inside the building, and the building at this point is fully contained, so there would be no floodwaters that would disperse that material into the wetlands. With regard to the leaching, the system, the containment system that we're providing is a seven-foot wall that essentially encircles the building, and there's a lift at each one of the gates, each one of the entry thresholds. That lift is one-half inch. And if you look over the volume inside the building at 94,000 square feet, I can assure you that we will not exceed, we can contain over 30,000 gallons within the building. So a wet load that comes in is going to have literally no effect with regard to running outside of the building. It'll be fully contained within the building. There was a question with regard to the 100 trucks. The 100 trucks that I cited is actually removal of 100 trucks from Route 95 corridor. I didn't mean to suggest that we were only receiving 100 trucks at this site on a daily basis. Secondly, the rail system has been used as recently as 2014 to ship from this site, when the demolition of the prior building was executed by the owner. That part of that material, not all of that material, part of that material was shipped by rail. So we did successfully use the rail as recent as 2014. The survey of the land tet wetland delineation was surveyed by our surveyor, William Nagel. He's a licensed surveyor, and it was applied to our plan, certainly under his review. There is another question with regard to the coastal consistency form that sits with the DEEP. As you can see, many of you have been here through three hearings. We've made a lot of changes to our plan. We think certainly to better. We hope that you, the commission, agree. We're going to incorporate, and we're going to have to revise that entire package at this point. So we haven't initiated that action. We wanted to work through your commission, and hopefully you'll vote in favor of this application, and then we'll proceed on to make modifications to that DEEP solid waste permit. But at this point, we understand there's an issue associated with the coastal consistency form, and we will be addressing that with the DEEP. With that said, I certainly would be available for any more questions you may have. Jeff, did you have any closing remarks? Yes.
Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Beatty. I'm an attorney in Guilford, 25 Boston Street. I'm here on behalf of Attorney Shields, who's out of town. The only thing I'd like to add in addition to what the commission just heard is that your concern is the regulation, your jurisdiction is over the regulatory area on this property, and concerns about, general concerns with regard to the impact on the environment beyond the regulatory, beyond your jurisdiction really isn't a factor for this commission to consider with regard to this application. When you're considering the application, the evidence supporting your decision must be substantial. And evidence of general impacts, mere speculation, or general concerns don't qualify as substantial evidence. Substantial evidence test requires a substantial basis in fact that an adverse impact to the wetlands or watercourses will result from the proposed activities, and that the commission's decision, and that the commission's decision must be supported by more than a mere possibility of that adverse impact. So based on that statement of the law and the evidence that you've received over the course of these hearings, we think that you should vote to approve the application.
Folks, please. Thank you for your comments. At one point, I do want to clarify, I want to make sure you weren't suggesting that we can only consider impacts to inland wetlands and watercourses on the property, because our regulations do allow for us to consider impacts that may be on an adjoining property that could be caused by the application.
That's accurate. I just meant the community in general, beyond the jurisdiction.
I'd want to agree with that.
Not beyond your jurisdictional area. That's what I said, thank you.
I have two questions. I have just two questions for the engineer.
You need to, if you have questions, you need to address them through us?
Through you?
Yes, ma'am.
So the percolating area on the right-hand side that you proposed, is that a concrete line? Or is that a percolating?
The question has to do with, well, I don't know if anyone else can hear. It has to do with the proposed mitigation on the eastern part of the property there, which I think is D2 drainage hearing. Question is to, is it a line facility? Is it intended to infiltrate or not?
Yes, yeah, that's intended to infiltrate. So we'd be excavating down, we'd be applying select soil and applying select growth media within that. Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Okay, and my other question was for the, so that's a percolating, a percolating question. So that's a percolating down into the soil, the park, correct?
That is the proposal, yes, ma'am.
And then the other question is, within the perimeter of the building, are there craters that are going to take whatever millipede waters and make them that out going out to the septic system here? Or is there some other way to let it back?
So, thank you, ma'am. Question, Mr. Andrews, is, has to do with, as I understand it, has to do with your new proposal for flood improvement and your knee wall and drainage from the building, how it will be captured, how it will be treated, et cetera, et cetera, which is a question I had quite frankly, so.
The drainage within the building itself?
Any liquids, we'll call it, within the building, how will that be contained? I believe we're supposed to contain it, but will there be any treatment? Will it be captured? Will it be containerized? How will it be dealt with?
If there's a significant liquid that could actually be removed from the floor, that would be containerized. However, our experience has been, in over 30 years of operation at these types of facilities, they typically are not provided with floor drains. As a result, as you can imagine, a floor drain on a tipping floor like this just doesn't lend itself well. The materials themselves absorb what little bit may come in a load, a load that didn't get rejected, that made it through the inspection process, and that material is essentially moved out. But we're not proposing any floor drains if, it's just not a practice that we typically engage in the solid waste industry.
Thank you.
Within the tipping area, certainly.
And that, we've had a number of comments about the potential for fire. You expressed a similar concern that there is certain potential, at least no one would look forward to that. But so that would also be, if there was a need to extinguish a fire, that runoff would be also entirely contained within the building? There would be no potential for a weakness of extinguishment?
Certainly, that would leak outside of the building. I don't think there's any question. Similar to a house or the business next door to this or any other building in town that has a fire, when the fire is fought, that water's presumably going to fill up the basement or whatever and run outside of the building. So I think it would be similar. It could be compared to other buildings within town.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. You were suggesting that somehow you could capture and contain that and then ultimately dispose of that?
No.
So I have a question. Do you want any drains in the facility if you are going to spray water to mitigate the air? So where does that work?
Yeah, it's actually a great question. The product that we use is called a mister, so it's a very, very light mist, specifically so that we don't create water problems. You're able to actually use that in a variety of different construction industries and such. But it puts a mist out there, suppresses the dust, but it doesn't carry a lot of, a significant amount of moisture. They're specifically designed essentially, right, to atomize, drop things out. And it's not like a sprinkler, which one could equate it to, but it's a very fine, well-designed system that specifically keeps you out of water business by design.
So if I could follow up on this airborne particulate issue? We also have a number of comments on that, and I don't believe in the last two hearings we've really dealt into it. So is it your position, your proposition that these misters somehow completely mitigate any airborne particulate matter from escaping? And/or combined with the mesh, so everything will be contained within the building?
I certainly can't guarantee that everything will be contained within the building, but I can cite that under Connecticut regulatory programs, the landowner and operator is going to be responsible for mitigating dust that runs off a property. So it would be illegal to create a situation where there's observable dust that's extending out beyond the property bounds. The system that we're providing is essentially a system that's designed to essentially meet the OSHA regulations so that the workers can work inside in a safe environment and not have to wear full respirators. So we're designing it for the workers to work within this over an eight-hour, nine-hour work period, and it's adequate for that. We're also providing the windscreens on the doors to keep the door openings, to keep any migrating material within the structure. So I think we've adopted what we feel comfortable with at this point that'll be workable for the owner, that'll be protective of the workers inside the building, and will be adequate to contain the dust to the building itself such that if it does migrate, the operation would have to be shut down until such time as they could come up with an alternative system to mitigate the dust. And that's understood.
So and just so, unless your DEP permit that you apply for, your CFP permit, would require some testing, some airborne particulate testing? It would require asbestos testing? It would require lead testing? Is there anything beyond that? And it would be required, from my understanding from my conversations with them, it would be required for probably the first two years, and then there would be no further air retesting required beyond that on your project?
Typically, that's how the permits have been written.
Right, and I'm curious, what suite of compounds would you actually be testing?
I think you mentioned the two, that we would typically be looking for asbestos and lead. Yeah, do you look for particulate too, Rick? Particulate as well.
Okay, we are, we are pretty much out of time. One last, very quick question, and that has to do with, again, there was concern raised by some folks this evening about the inspection process. Just curious as to whether or not you have anything else to add about your inspection of the loads coming in, the ability to screen, not screen, whether or not that has changed?
We haven't changed anything on that. We, as I mentioned, we typically have camera mounted over the scale house that's utilized to scan the load. We have workers on the floor in the tipping floor when the load is being deposited. And between those two processes, that's typically how it's handled, and that's usually where, if a load gets rejected, the load can sometimes be dropped on the tipping floor and then still be rejected where it has to be loaded back into the truck. But that's normally how we handle it, yeah.
I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Andrews. No, we're actually out of time, I'm sorry. We do need to leave. We need to close the public hearing. We will certainly not be making a decision this evening. I do expect that we will have deliberations and ultimately a decision at our next regular monthly meeting. Folks, that is May 1st. Probably scheduled for the green room, but if there's interest, we might try to secure this location again. It's not available. We can check on that. We will certainly, we will make that certainly publicly available, where we'll be meeting next month. So. Yeah, yeah, all right. So Andrea, no, motion to close the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Andrews made a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Bertram seconds, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you oppose or see? Thank you. Folks, commissioners, before we leave, on our agenda is, agenda item, which you actually potentially have a decision, we just need to table that to the next meeting. Bertram?
Move to table, that item three.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Andrea seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, folks, please, thank you, commissioners. Motion to adjourn. You've made a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? For Bertram. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.